Here.
Mr. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Scrivener?
Here.
Mr. Leachman?
Here.
And Mr. Wood?
Present.
And it does not look like Pastor Jordan Counts is here for invocation. Leon, would you mind doing our invocation for tonight?
Oh, no problem. Let's pray. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you so much for the wonderful love that you've given us through your son, Jesus, and we thank you for all the wonderful things you've given us through our lives and for this city. We pray that you be with us tonight, that the decisions we make would be good for the city and would help people to be growing stronger and to just learn more about what it is we need to do. For it is in the most presence's name we pray, dear Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a proclamation tonight. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program entitled National Night Out, and whereas the 41st Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of El Dorado to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community, police community crime prevention efforts, and whereas the residents of the city of El Dorado play a vital role in assisting the El Dorado Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of El Dorado and are supporting National Night Out 2025 locally, and whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of El Dorado be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city of El Dorado, and whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I Bill Young do hereby pro, do hereby recognize Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, as National Night Out, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. In witness thereof, I hereby intend to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed on the fourth day of August 2025. Mike, do we, Chief, do we have any special National Night Out stuff that you want to talk about, or?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. There's nothing really new. This is an annual event that goes on every year. This is a great opportunity for members of our department to interact with citizens and children from our community, just to strengthen those relationships in, you know, collaboration with working together and resolving issues that affect our community.
We appreciate it. We appreciate the department.
Is this going to be down at the park?
This will be at East Park. I believe Tabitha mentioned earlier that one of the radio stations was advertising that this will be at North Main. It will be at East Park as usual.
You need help?
We'll take all the volunteers we can get.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. We'll move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of this meeting by calling City Clerk Emerald Ashlock at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM on Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. And tonight for personal appearance, we have El Dorado Main Street. Emily is here to provide their second quarter update.
Thank you. I'm Emily Cannell. I'm the Director of El Dorado Main Street. So Tabitha, show me. I have to punch it. Just enter? Great. Great, thank you. Our title page says that Mary Martha Good would be here to give this report tonight, and she expresses her regrets, but she cannot be here tonight, so therefore I'm giving this report.
So you thought, Tabitha?
No, that's all right. I think I spelled.
Don't worry, it'll work out.
You start, and I'll fix it. The keyboard's off.
Okay. So quickly, I just want to talk about projects that we were involved in in the second quarter and a little bit in third quarter, but as always, context is important. So here we go. Main Street, El Dorado Main Street, works to preserve historic buildings, support downtown businesses, and attract new enterprise, produce special events, ensure quality experiences await in the downtown district. We're primarily volunteer-driven, and we are accredited through National Main Street, Main Street America, and our state, Kansas Main Street. So that goes backwards. This goes forwards. Is that right? Going forward is what we really want to do.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. And this is the, the scope of work for Main Street has two contexts primarily. One is our MOU with the city of El Dorado, which is, is a five-year-old document at this point, though it has been reviewed. We haven't really changed it substantively since it was instituted. And it helps guide us to make sure that the city is having its expectations met relative to the support that you give our organization. I have a copy of the full memorandum if anybody would like to see that. It's also online. It's currently under review by city staff, I believe, as well as by our executive committee. We work with a framework of four points: economic vitality, design, promotion, all under the umbrella of an organization, Main Street. Two of our goals in the first quarter were to add three new board members. In the first quarter, Mary Martha Good became our president, and in the second quarter, Anna Vestring, who you all may know, her enterprise downtown is Main Vaults, but she has a long history of retail in this city, multi-generational, and Dave Estes, who runs a martial arts establishment on Main Street, South Main, and has for over 20 years. Recently retired from ConFAE. So the goals for '25-'26, we worked on these goals. It's interesting how simple these look and, but what they distill is a lot of effort in terms of trying to be really clear about where we want to put our emphasis this year. And going into 2026 into that effort, this time last year, we went through a transformational strategy workshop supplied by about a $12,000 value of consulting, coming here for three days, personnel from Main Street America, working with our state representatives, and we came up with these goals to concentrate our work plans and interpret our mission. So the two primary ones are to support the downtown as a family-friendly destination. We're not talking about a retail center, the way people used to talk about the commercial center for downtown. And this, in any case, we'd be very happy to talk further about that. So that's goal number one. And then increase density for upper-story residential, and then organizational stability to be able to execute the vision that we have in our work plans properly. And then perhaps the biggest and most important thing is for Main Street to be a good collaborator, to build a collaborative base, both for Main Street, but also to have other people confident in the collaborative process. We think we can be stronger by working together as discreet organizations, and we'll get to where we are with those things. So organizational sustainability, we accomplished this year, not raising money. It was a break-even endeavor, but this is the vision of two El Dorado residents. It's never been before configured like this, a golf challenge that we know of. You can read this and see the details. We, we had a great time out at Prairie Trails. We got a lot of support from them. The people who came up with this are Craig Yarvin, who you all know, and, help me, Leon?
Neil Buckman.
Thank you, Neil Buckman. And we think that we are definitely on track to have it be very financially successful next year. Please take a look at the sponsorship help that we got for this, and people were very enthusiastic about it from a sponsorship level, because it's something that we've never done before, not even, not, not in El Dorado, not in Kansas, not anywhere that we know of. Anyway, we're in the process of doing a pretty rigorous review, so that the changes we make, we can start much earlier. We didn't get started on this really, besides conceptually, late last fall. We really got started on this in February, and so we feel like we had a great success. A tremendous volunteer support as well. Our supporter campaign became very important this year in the light of the pressure we have on that not making money from the hot-shot golf challenge, and we have 60% committed our goals for 2025 to date at this point. And so we have a bit of a challenge between now and December 1, but we think our, our supporter campaign usually is in August, and it will be again this year, our mailing supporter program. But we have what we call super supporters, and that's $1,000 or more, or multiples of that, et cetera. So we'll get back to you in the third quarter about how well we're doing with that. And then the annual city support, we have received both payments. They are semi-annual. $30,000 has been what the city has allocated to help Main Street gratefully, I must say. And I've been director this year as my, the end of my 10th year, and so it's always been, we're not going to talk about this tonight, are we, Kendra? No, we're not. I just want you to look at the word inflation, okay? Somewhere. Put that in the margin. Okay, thanks. So increase density is our second goal. We think that Main Street, when I say we, I mean, not me in the mouse in my pocket, but Main Street nationally and statewide, we've learned that increasing density downtown helps so many needs that we have. We get questioned often about, what are you going to do about now that we've lost Robins, now that we've lost trunk-to-treasures, now that we have these vacancies? How are we going to build? What are you doing for filling these buildings and so forth, right? What are you doing to support the businesses that are here, retail, and even the services downtown? And it's a great question, and we all have it on our minds. Every time you go past a vacant building, you're wondering what's going to happen next. And the strategy that we have learned is the very best strategy is increased density in the downtown area. If you can increase density, you can draw retail, you can draw services. Some people get really involved in the chicken-and-egg thing. You've got to have retail to get people wanting to live there. Or you have to have density, and then retail will come. And that's the balance that Main Street says, this is the side, increased density, more residential. And from a city's point of view, it's the least expensive development you can possibly do from infrastructure and streets and all that, that kind of thing. And these buildings already have that potential. And these are the projects that we're currently actively engaged in. A lot more have information about this and are looking at their own situations, but right now, the Masonic Building has a potential of 14 apartments. The Knowles Building has been tentatively approved through the Historic Society's first visitation for seven apartments on the second floor. The Masonic Building will be, as, I think you've probably all seen the phrase loft-style apartments. The Knowles Building will be a combination of one bedroom and maybe a couple of two bedrooms, and, and a couple of small ones, but nevertheless, total of seven on the second floor. Now, the Smith Building is not a building a lot of you have been thinking about, because it is occupied partially. You know the Smith Building? It's on Central, West Central, across from the courthouse. It's the old St. Luke's Building, right? You all know what I'm talking about with the Smith Building. We think that the, the potential for residential is the best way to go to make that a performing asset and to meet the needs of the city and the market that we have, which is, we can talk more about that. But in any case, we're projecting 16 apartments. We don't know whether it'll be fewer with more bedrooms or what the exact, what the exact number of apartments will be, but I put down 16 for that. And then there's a, a small commercial industrial building on South Main, from three to five, and it has been approved a number of years ago for these apartments, and now the owner is ready to move on it. So we're working on that capital stack. And the number of buildings with second-story potential and occupied, the total number in the downtown district is 43, give or take one or two. And 20 some of those are already occupied. So we have, let's just round it to 20, 20 second stories, including these four on this slide. So we're excited about that because of certain grants that have been, that are new, that have come through. We've talked about this before. I think the HEAL grant and the Rooms Grant and so on, but tax credits. And there are people who are motivated, because that picture is changing with the upcoming elections. The possibilities of that can change, and so they want to take advantage right now. It's terrific in terms of help, and even with all the help, it's still a challenge, so we'll see how it all rolls. So, let's see, backwards. Building a collaborative base, communications is essential, and we have a good relationship with Butler Times Gazette. You may have noticed how often they mention the downtown and businesses and enterprises that are going on down there. We have a Facebook presence that is reasonably consistent, and we are working well, I believe, with Experian's El Dorado. I think Experian's El Dorado is doing a stellar job, and they're very helpful in many ways. We want to strengthen our partner relationships, and we started again having partner meetings monthly. We're, they're being held over at the Civic Center in the Chamber Meeting Room, and we had one today. It's the first Monday of any month. If you all ever want to come, that would be great, if you wanted to sit in and see how those work. How are we doing? On time, Kelly? Okay, then. Appreciation for volunteers. We do these kinds of events. Just so you know, you know the downtown assemblies. We're working on the agenda for August, and the partners will be the agenda for the November Assembly, in case you're interested in coming and seeing how we all present together. Thankful Thursdays, the second quarter, didn't start until the second quarter this year because of variety of things downtown. And then event planning is underway, and there's not a lot new on that last one, except I'd like you to skip to the Wiffle Ball Stadium. And in terms of family-friendly, this event just hits the bullseye for us. And the grants that we've been able to work on mainly through our vice president, Nicole Insmeier, who is just a stunning grant writer. As you know, we got the T-Mobile Hometown Grant for $50,000, and that's for the Wiffle Ball. The Department of Commerce New Signs Grant was a 50% match, so almost $10,000, and that goes for the Jumbotron. Have you seen the plans that show the drum, the Jumbotron in place facing north on the south wall? So it's part of a multi-use aspect. So that's taken care of. There will be a reapplication to the Kansas Tourism and Attraction Grant this fall. The big challenge, as I understand it, is the artificial turf that has to be laid down. And then, just for your own information, if you don't know, through Main Street, a HEAL grant was submitted for $100,050 matching. And so we helped get that for District 142, which is our part of that property. So thank you very much. Sorry to go over.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we don't have any other personal appearances. Next, we have public comments. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding any matter that is under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personal matters, matters pending in court, and land use matters are not permitted. Land use public hearings are held during the Planning Commission meeting. And do we have someone here for public comment?
I have something for you if I can.
Come on.
And those are for you to keep? My name is Sydney Russell. I am the music teacher at Grandview Elementary here in El Dorado. I'm also an alumni of El Dorado, so it's good to be back. This will be my fifth year as a music teacher here in El Dorado. Well, third year is in El Dorado, but fifth year of, as a music teacher overall. Out of respect for your time, I'm going to be reading from a pre-written speech, but feel free to stop me and ask questions anytime. So. My name's Sydney Russell. I'm the music teacher at Grandview Elementary. I'm here tonight to propose the creation of the El Dorado Youth Symphony Orchestra, a program designed to give local students, musicians, access to high-level ensemble experience regardless of their background, instrument, or income. El Dorado is full of young, talented musicians, but many of them have limited access to orchestral playing due to cost, travel, or lack of opportunity due to having to travel to places like Andover where to try to access it. Our youth symphony would meet right here in town and perform two concerts a year and be absolutely tuition-free, showcasing not only our youth talents, but also our city's investment in the arts. We're not just creating music. We're building discipline, confidence, and community. Studies consistently show that students involved in music perform better academically and are more engaged citizens in their community. This program would be a point of pride for El Dorado and a meaningful step toward retaining and inspiring our youth. I'm seeking funding to help with sheet music, rehearsal space, and small stipends for our local instructors, et cetera, which is highlighting, highlighted in your binders. With your support, we can launch a program that will have lasting impact for generations, similar to our city band. We encourage you to please visit our website and click on the tab "Community" to learn more about our vision and mission for the musical youth community of the city of El Dorado. This is going to be launched to the umbrella of the business El Dorado Music Lessons here in town. So I and the gentleman, Tim Gahn, I don't know if anyone's met him before, him and I are spearheading this. He has, what's the word, kind of generously, let me kind of use his clientele, kind of get with him and partner with him on this, on this project. So I really thank him and shout out to him for that. And he couldn't be here tonight, but he sends his regards. And I just wanted to thank you for your time, and I wanted to thank you for advocating for the musical youth in El Dorado, and I wanted to ask if you had any questions for me.
I got a couple of questions. I love it. I love music. So I think it's a great idea to put you on. Is the, have you approached the school about helping to, like, looking at the budget, I think there's a partnership there where they could help provide some music stands and things of that nature?
Sure, sure. I have not approached the school yet. Similarly to the city, city band, I, so I got with the president of city band, Cherokee Manning. We, she kind of gave me her insight on a couple of those things. Like, I kind of asked her, like, how did you approach getting this fund? I know that she didn't, you know, spearhead the city band in general, but how has she handled things like this in the past? And she has expressed that kind of like trying to get in with the USD 490. It can sometimes be challenging. Nothing to USD 490's fault. It just, there's a lot of, I guess you could say red tape, or a lot of rules that you can go through, through USD 490 to get thing, get funding through the schools. So if, if that's something that would be needed or something that would, that you guys would support, I would definitely appreciate your support and your help approaching the schools for, for something like that.
And maybe not even necessarily for funding, just, you know.
Just for support, yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure they've got 15, you know, 15 music stands laying around somewhere that could donate.
I actually have 32 in my closet in my classroom.
Just some ideas like that.
So my concern with that, with music stands specifically, would be, would be transport back and forth. They're heavy, they're lumpy. That would cost money, extra money for you or I, or whatever. But yes, that's something that could be looked into, absolutely.
Is this something during the school year or during the fall?
Yes. So in order for students who want to still participate in city band, they can do that. So this will be during the school year. So we'll have one concert in the fall and one concert in the spring. And then during the summertime, we will not hold the youth symphony, so that way students who want to participate in city band may also do that. And this will also provide an opportunity and kind of bridge that gap for our string students in the area to be able to have a community musical enrichment opportunity, and also for our homeschool students in the area who would like an enrichment opportunity as well for music. And we have more than you think, so.
Have you approached USD 490 about maybe being able to use their facilities down there?
I have not. We have mumblings of, of a building.
Okay.
For El Dorado Music Lessons, the business. We are, this is part of kind of our launch of a community initiative that we're trying to launch, of just trying to create more opportunities for our youth in El Dorado to create music. So this is one of those parts of that initiative. Another part of our initiative that we are trying to launch is a community children's theater, which we are looking into some facilities and things like that for that. We're also looking into a mommy-and-me-style class, which I have actually already started, and I have four students enrolled right now. So if you have any friends or family who have toddlers who are looking for an opportunity like that, definitely send them my way. But we are just trying to serve our community and especially our youth, and show our youth and show the people in our community that you can serve the community through music, and it can be a service opportunity too.
This spreadsheet you have expenses.
Yes, ma'am.
Total is what, six, basically $7,000, right?
Yes, and that is comparable to the city band. The city band's, last year's budget was a little over $7,000.
But we don't give them, what do we give the city band?
Seventy-two hundred?
Seventy-four?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I like this. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you need to contact me or Tim, our contact information is in the back of that binder. And my name is Sydney Russell, so you can always contact me either through my school email or my emails posted on the website as well.
And these, these letters at the beginning are from?
Oh, yes. So, thank you for mentioning that. We have nine letters of support from members of our community, musical leaders in our musical leaders in our community, Eldorado Main Street, alumni from Eldorado, just all, just tons of people who have expressed extreme support and extreme want and extreme need for this program. And extreme, just, they just see the benefit for something like this, for their kids, for their friends' kids. I have experience directing an ensemble like this. I went to K-State and I saw a need for a youth ensemble there. So at the church that I went to, so I directed a youth symphony there for a couple of years before COVID. And so I've seen it, I know it works, I know it inspires children, I know that the work that it can do. And I know that it works with it being tuition-free as well. And it just, it makes a real impact. So I think it can be a great thing for our city.
Can we keep this?
Absolutely, keep it. And if you need any more information, please reach out anytime.
You got a name and phone number in here, Sydney?
Yep, right at the back. It's, yep. Yeah, that'll be Tim's phone number, but if you, you can always ask him for my phone number, my direct phone number if you want to reach out to me specifically. Because I'll be the director of it, so. Thank you, appreciate it. Nice to meet you all.
Thanks, Sydney. Nice to meet you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we're considering approval of the City Commission meeting minutes from July 7, 2025, and City Commission Work Session minutes from July 16, 2025. Motion to approve this agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. There's nothing for old business. Move on to Gen Item Number Nine. And new business, consideration of the approval of a bid for Project Number 631, the resurfacing of Central Avenue from Jones to Havreville.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, this section of Central Avenue was awarded a CCLIP fund, funds from the Kansas Department of Transportation. CCLIP is basically a program we can go after funding. It's a competitive program for what we consider connecting links. So Central is a state highway, but the city is responsible for the maintaining that highway. The city was awarded a grand on that. The project was bid out. The engineers estimate on the project was $592,942. APAC Kansas submitted the lowest bid at $488,519.41. Along with Mill and Overlay, the project includes some underdrains that we're doing at the intersection of Havreville and Central to try to divert some groundwater. Things have been done over the years. But this will actually put in some underdrains and some drain fields underneath the road, try to get some water out of there. You see the project going on out there right now with little treated water line replacements. So making more improvements at the intersection. Anticipated start of this is mid-September and should go married quickly. Substantial completion of the contract is October 11 for the contract.
Ready for motion?
Aye.
I move that since APAC Kansas has submitted the lowest and best bid of $488,519.41 for Project Number 631, the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnish the proper bonds.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Gen Item Number 10, consideration of a resolution setting a public hearing to consider the adoption of a redevelopment project plan and establishment of a reinvestment housing incentive district for 124 South Main Street in accordance with KSA 12-5241. That's it.
So this is a first action necessary to establish a redevelopment housing incentive district for an RHIPE. By state law, the city has to set a public hearing, conduct a public hearing, and then at that point you can establish a project, which is the RHIPE. So if you're familiar very quickly, RHIPE operates like a TIF district, where we lock in the appraised value or the appraised value of the property. And then as improvements are made, the additional taxes that come from the improvements are captured and used to reimburse eligible development expenses. The action they're asking to do tonight is merely set the public hearing, which will be for September 15. And at that point, we will then conduct the public hearing and take that next step for establishing an RHIPE. So this just establishes the date of the public hearing.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve a resolution setting a public hearing to consider the adoption of redevelopment project plan and establishment of a reinvestment housing incentive district for 124 South Main in accordance with KSA 12-5241. Et sec.
Et sec? What is that?
Et sec.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Gen Item Number 11, consideration of a resolution setting a public hearing for the purpose of abating or removing dangerous structures at 918 North Gordy, 920 North Gordy, 937 Oak, 1500 West Second, 1015 North Taylor, 610 West 10th, 501 West 12th, 502 West 12th, and 1125 North Walnut.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, so another public hearing for the 15th on this item as well for consideration. And this is for notification of the owners of these properties that you named for consideration of either abating the nuisance or the issues with the structure or potential demolition of the structure. If you so set the public hearing this evening tonight, all of them will be notified via mail along with any lien holders on the property as well. And during that public hearing, we will encourage the individuals, the owners, some we've been in communication with, some we have not, to engage with staff prior to the public hearing. So give you as much information as possible. But they are able to come here and speak to you all as well that evening.
Are some of these because of the flood?
Two of them are.
Two of them are?
Yes.
And the others are just unsafe structures?
Actually, I apologize, three of them are. 918 North Gordy, 920 North Gordy, and there is one on 12th Avenue as well.
Go ahead, Ms.
I rep, moved to approve a resolution authorizing the scheduling of a public hearing on September 15, 2025, at 5:30 for the purpose of abatement or removing the dangerous structures at 918 North Gordy, 920 North Gordy, 937 Oak, 1500 West Second, 1015 North Taylor, 610 West 10th, 501 West 12th, 502 West 12th, and 1125 North Walnut.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion or questions?
I may just point out to remind the Commissioner that the 15th as well, you'll individually consider a resolution for each property that you can insert.
Conditions and terms?
Terms, yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Gen Item Number 12, consideration of the approval of the excess sales tax committee recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, permission? Each year, the excess sales tax committee gathers and makes a recommendation on the expenditure of the excess sales tax fund. You have reviewed these projects prior to now, but it is time to make an official approval so that we can include them in the budget for 2026. The projects are listed there in your packet. The only one we are recommending not be approved currently is the $300,000 for the youth facility because we'd like to wait for a decision on the Civic Center prior to making a recommendation on how we should spend those funds. All the other projects will be ready to go forward. We will be bringing you, I know that previously you've asked questions about the facade grant and housing and such. The housing funds still have to go to the Housing Committee for a recommendation to you. The facade grant and the downtown, I'm sorry, housing and the facade grant, we will be bringing you a proposal on how to spend those funds here, hopefully in the next 30 days, and that way we can get those out.
What about projects from last year, like the sound system? Is that money then just set aside because it's already been approved?
Yes, that money's in a project right now and will be there until we have determined how to go forward. Those funds actually are for expenditure this year, so they're still working.
Thank you.
I move to accept the recommendation of the excess sales tax committee, except for the youth recreation facility funds, which will be decided on at a future date.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion or questions?
I have a question. I guess maybe, I thought we talked about the Gordy Park Pavilion. Is that a project we still want to move forward with? You know, I thought we were reevaluating that. Is that not accurate?
We're going to bring it to commission next Wednesday at the work session to discuss, but Gravy Works is working on the official approval of the band show. And so I don't believe that that will be ready by Wednesday. We signed a contract with them last week while David was out. So he hopes to have us something here within the next two weeks, but it won't be by next Wednesday. So we will probably hold on that until later in August or early September.
Will that include the information like the input you received back from citizens through the Facebook and all the other things?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll have access to that.
Okay.
So do we need to adjust that out of the motion? Funding for Gordy Park at this point?
You can. The Gordy Park Pavilion project already exists because it was funded the previous year.
That's true.
So it's already out there. So if you, whatever you decide on that project, we will make, we can make an official motion to move that money later. If we do.
So we can still build that fund ultimately, whether we end up spending it at Gordy Park or to renovate, revitalize the band show. We can make that, I mean, we control those purse strengths here, so we can do that. If you guys are all good with that, then.
Yes.
I don't have a problem.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kelly, for bringing that up. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. As all for new business, and there's nothing under discussion items, so move on to City Commission Advisory Board updates. We'll start with Commissioner Wilkinson.
We had a Main Street meeting. Find the right page. On July 24. And we discussed the upper-story housing that Emily covered this evening. And like she said, we discussed the business density as opposed to housing density. And that was a bit of a discussion. We also talked about the downtown assembly that was coming up, which is Tuesday, the 12th. The 14th of August, Main Street is holding a meet and greet for the new president, Butler, Dr. Tamara Daniel. It's Thursday, the 14th, from 4 to 6 at the Coutts Museum. And there will be light refreshments served. We'll hear comments from Dr. Daniel at 5 o'clock. And it's kind of a come and go. So it gives you an opportunity to meet the new Butler president. We talked about the chili contest for Thankful Thursday on October 2. They're starting with making plans for the Trick or Treat Down the Street, which is October 31st from 4 to 6. They are doing some refining to the Old Fashioned Christmas, talking about a model train display. The Grizzly Parade, even though not Main Street, we talked about it, which is August, this August 23rd. I think it's at 10 o'clock in the morning is the Grizzly Parade. Talked about what Main Street involvement would be with the Gold Fest celebration. Main Street wants to have some involvement in helping out. And then, of course, the Celebration of Freedom Parade, which is November 8. We also spent some time on the city mural project. Tabitha was at the meeting in place of David, who was on vacation. And so she explained about the funding through the city and the wanting of murals in the downtown and the involvement of Brick Mob, which is the group that did the Joe Buffalo Plaza. Isn't that what we call the Joe Buffalo? Do we all know why it's named Joe Buffalo?
It was, when the artist submissions were given to the city, they all have names on them. And Brick Mob names theirs with whatever the name of the picture is and the artist's name. So the artist that made the Buffalo, his name is Joe, so they called him Joe Buffalo. I called it that all the time because that's what it always shows up in my email. And we may have, Kate may have mistakenly thought that was actually the name of the Buffalo, so.
Hey, I think it works.
We inadvertently named the Buffalos.
Yes, we named it. The artist was very flattered and excited, so.
And we did talk about the partnership with the city. We did discuss the goals for '25, '26. So basically what Emily went through in her second quarter is pretty much what we've talked about, Eldorado Main Street. I just want to remind you about the meet and greet this Thursday, the 14th, 4 to 6.
Next Thursday.
That's what I said, next Thursday, August 14th, 4 to 6. Sorry.
Good job.
Thank you. Moving on.
Counselor, I have nothing.
I also have the city manager's report.
Well, as Kyle mentioned, we've got a grant for, a CCLIP grant for Mill and Overlay on Central from Jones to Havreville, which will be started here relatively soon. We also have another grant for Mill and Overlay on Central from Lawyer to Havreville. So we're going to continue to move down Central. Kate has been very gracious to fund our grant requests, and so we'll continue to do that as they, or continue to fund those projects. We also got a grant, a highway safety improvement project for Sixth and Main. The city submitted, maybe Scott can talk a bit more about that, but it adds some lanes, or not lanes, but adds some width to that to make it easier for trucks to turn, so we're going to have a little like that.
Yeah, it's a, the congested part of that leg, as you all probably experiences, northbound turns from Sixth Avenue on to Main during peak hours. So that'll convert to dual left turns. And then the outside lane, which is currently a right turn only on that western leg of Six, will turn to a through and right turn. The radius on the northwest corner will also be redone and widened. And some pedestrian improvements. That's a project that won't start till later, '27, '28. But that's when the federal funding we receive for it is. But it is a 90-10 project for the city, so 10% of us, 90% of them.
The community relief funds for the June 3 flood, we've had 17 applications. We're continuing to work out ways of getting information out. Right now, the United Way and Leaning Foundation are currently heading up that effort of distributed funds that we have coming in. The Public Insurance Department has kind of, has finished up the Central and Havreville Water Main project. That's been tied in, disinfected, and the cleanup remains, but that project there at Central and Havreville should be pretty much done for the most part. The Village Water Station replacement project will start next Monday. There was a little bit of delay in getting some materials, so that will start up here very quickly. And that project will be actually.
Vintage.
Vintage, not vintage.
Oh, yes, vintage, sorry about that, I misread that. That project will need very long in getting underway. Public Utilities Department also began replacing Water Main on South Denver next Monday. They're going to start that project and then kind of take a look and see what the condition is before deciding whether or not to continue further down the line. They also concluded a smoke testing on sanitary sewer system on the south of the town by the college. They did find some broken manholes and an old catch basin pond connection that was behind Walmart. So this will allow them to identify some opportunities to kind of shore up the system and prevent some INI or inflow of the filtration from getting into the system. And then, as was mentioned, Gravvy Works have preliminary information back on the band shell preservation plan within the next few weeks, so we can get it from the commission. So you all can make a decision on where we want to go with the band show and or the Gordy Park, Gordy Park pavilion project.
Yeah, if there's nothing else, I consider a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.